Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order, August 8, 2012. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Right.
And Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Sieratino?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here. 3.0, special recognitions, we don't have any tonight. 4.0, additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, none. And 5.0, citizen statements. I would like to call on Mr. Dudley McCarter. Come, state your name and address, and welcome.
Good evening. Dudley McCarter is my name. I live at 338 Peak Skill, Creve Court, Missouri, 63141. Dr. Marty, President Feldman, Ms. Calanda, and friends, members of the school board. I'm here tonight as a citizen, and I'm also here as a member of the Board of Missourians for Health and Education. And our organization is the one that has sponsored, along with the American Cancer Society and the American Lung Association, the initiative petition to increase Missouri's tobacco tax that will thankfully be on the ballot this November. Last week, the Missouri Supreme Court denied a, what I thought was a frivolous challenge to the initiative petition, and yesterday, the Secretary of State certified the signatures, so it will be on the ballot. And I am here to shamelessly and without apology urge you to support this, to endorse it as a school board, and as leaders in our community, to ask your friends and family to support this. Missouri's cigarette tax is an embarrassment. It is 17 cents per pack. The national average is $1.46. Every state surrounding Missouri has a cigarette tax in excess of $1. Illinois, for example, is $1.98, Iowa $1.3 or $1.4, Arkansas $1.5. And not only do we have the lowest cigarette tax in the country, we have one of the highest smoking rates and one of the highest rates of cancer causing death. It is projected that $280 million will be raised by the increase in the tobacco tax if it passes. Of that $280 million, 50 percent is designated to go through to K-12 education, 30 percent to higher ed, and 20 percent to cancer prevention and smoking prevention programs. That number will go down, and we hope it goes down. And the reason it will go down is that based on studies in other states, a 73 cent increase in our cigarette tax is likely to reduce smoking by 33,000 adults in the state of Missouri in the first year, and it is likely to cause 11 percent of the youths who start smoking to stop smoking and not become addicted to smoking. And it is our hope that that number goes down every year, because fewer people will be smoking and more people will quit smoking who wouldn't have otherwise quit had the cigarette tax stayed as low as it is. Right now, the state of Missouri expends over $530 million in unreimbursed Medicaid expenses that are directly attributable to smoking-related illnesses. And that puts a big hole in the state budget, obviously, and there's no funding to address that. But the $258 million, or whatever is raised through the increase in the cigarette tax, will be put by special legislation in a special trust fund. The Missouri Legislature cannot touch it for general appropriations or filling any other budget gaps. It is designated to be in the special trust fund just to be used for K-12 higher ed and smoking prevention programs. My hope is that you endorse this as a board. I understand that the Missouri School Board Association either has prepared or will shortly prepare a model resolution that it will distribute to all school boards. I've already discussed it briefly with Paul Tandy, and I know how capable Paul is. He will get his hands on that as soon as it's available. But I'd like you to do more than that. As, you know, I sat on the school board for a number of years, and I, there were resolutions that I was in favor of, and I was happy we passed, but then it kind of ended there. I think for this to pass, it's going to need more than just every school board in the state passing a resolution. It's going to need support from individuals, citizens, leaders in the community. Let me briefly tell you what happened six years ago. Tobacco tax failed by a vote of 50.1 to 49.1, if my math is right. Am I right, Tom? Did it come up to 100? It's close. Anyway, it passed by less than 1 percent. And the reason it did was the tobacco companies funded a pretty well-disguised and what I would call a stealth campaign. They got together with the convenience stores, and they paid for signs to be put on the gas pumps at all the convenience stores in the state. And when you got your gas, six years ago, at a convenience store in one of the Missouri rural areas typically, there was a sign that said, "Vote No on Prop S, 400 percent tax increase." It didn't say what Prop S was, and it was stuck on the gas pumps. So everybody that pumped their gas thought it was a 400 percent increase in gasoline tax. And that type of deceptive campaigning is what we can expect again this November. The tobacco companies are going to fight this hard, the convenience store lobbying groups are going to fight it hard, and we really need a grassroots effort by everyone in Missouri who's in favor of this to support it. So, as I said, without apology, shamelessly, I ask you to endorse this and to promote it, and use your leadership and your influence here in this community to support it. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I provided to President Feldman one of the fact sheets that the American Cancer Society has produced, and that provides the data that has been compiled by it based on national studies of the effect of an increase in cigarette taxes and how it reduces smoking in both adults and children. And the health benefits of this, to me, are frankly more important than the money that will be generated for K-12 and higher ed. Let me end with this note, and I'm going to try hard not to be sarcastic, but it may sound sarcastic. We're very proud that we have the lowest cigarette tax in the state of 17 cents. We are 48th in per capita funding in higher ed, and we are 47th in per capita funding for K-12. There's a disconnect there that I cannot understand, how we can be so proud that we have the lowest cigarette tax and not embarrassed that we have the lowest funding for education of all but two states in the country. That's my plea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I am happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your service as Parkway School Board members. I really enjoyed my time sitting up there with you, and I know what good work you all do. So, any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
You got my vote.
[laughter]
And my support, and I'll help promote.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And if any of you want to talk to me privately about it, if any of you have a group that you're a member of that you'd like me to come visit, I'm delighted to do that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Dudley, in your memory, I will vote no on the last vote of the evening, so.
Okay. Thank you.
He does, every time. He does.
I never prevail.
Thanks, Dudley. You will receive a reply in writing, and thank you. I'm glad you found some other cause to take up your excess volunteer time that you have.
[laughter]
Thank you. 6.0, call for executive session, none. 7.0, approval of agenda for August 8, 2012. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for August 8, 2012?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 8.0, resolutions, there are none. 9.0, communications. 9.01, calendar of meetings. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, September 19, 2012, at Central Middle School. There will be a tax rate hearing at 7:00 PM with the regular meeting starting at 7:30 PM. 9.02, liaison reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to tell us about?
Sure.
Bruce, I'll start with you.
Well, in the spirit of the evening, I'll put in a shameless plug for the Coursera Massive Open Enrollment Online Course through Princeton University Statistics course, starting September 3. I'll be happy to send you a link, or maybe we can post it on the website, but the more the merrier. And it's statistics as taught by a psychology professor, so I think it ought to be pretty entertaining.
Chris?
I just wanted to report to the board. I took a little time out. I know you guys were at, I think, with Bill Daggett, and some of that was going on at the same time, but the Science in Residence that was over at Maryville. I just had a delightful time talking to some of the teachers and people that were there. I know one lady who was from the city of St. Louis. One of the things they were doing was making these robots, and it was pretty intense. You had to figure out how to use mathematics and various things. The wheel rotates so far, they had the, I can't remember exactly, they were picking up a ball and putting it somewhere, or something like that. She named her robot, this teacher, she named it Total Frustration. [laughter] But she said by the end of the time there that it was just, she renamed it to Little Frustration. But the kids had a great time, and there was still a great amount of excitement there with the different groups, the private and the other public school systems that were there. It was just, it was great. And they got funding for another year, so it's really a neat program, and I was glad I was there to represent the board.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, I did attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new 141 interchange, and Dr. Marty was there in attendance as well, and he was one of the few.
That was the beginning of the heat wave, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was right in the middle of the heat wave. I was a pretty sweaty ambassador. But there was, just about every politician that had any interaction at all with it had something to say. [laughter] I'll take a little bit of credit for that. But hopefully, when school starts, they'll have everything worked out with Ladoo and interchange, so people want to not take credit for that.
It was nice. Parkway was thanked for our cooperation in front of it, so I would know it's nice.
All right. Anybody else? All right, a couple of things. A few of us took a summer school tour with Mike Cosgrove over the summer, and we visited many sites, including the group at Maryville. And what a great experience to learn about all the great things that are going on. Our Algebra I kids finalizing their learning in Algebra I so they'll be ready to start geometry. Our kids preparing for college at Maryville, I thought was just so inspiring. It's a terrific program. I think it was pretty much sold out, and I look forward to them increasing their capacity next year. We have a great partnership with Maryville, and it's a great thing for our kids to be able to spend part of their summer in college, you know, getting ready, seeing what it feels like to be in those buildings and walking on that campus. They got some tours of some other schools, and they really did a lot of great things. So thanks for my, to Mike Cosgrove. And we visited all levels, saw all sorts of neat things, band, orchestra, a lot of enrichment, a lot of support, learning, art, all sorts of great things. So it was really a worthwhile, a worthwhile experience to go on the tour. And also yesterday, Dr. Marty and I visited with the bus drivers coming back to work, and then later on, we visited with the food service workers. So everybody's getting geared up. I know the teachers came back to work today. And tomorrow, we'll see everybody bright and early. We're excited to have another welcome, another kickoff meeting. Dr. Marty's second.
Yes.
Can we all believe that that's gone by so quickly? Anyway, so that's it for liaisons, from me.
Do we get to see how the twins have progressed over the years?
I'm sorry, I did, there's a main speaker tomorrow, so I don't have a lot of time.
No family photo.
All right. So we'll go on now to 10.0, action items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the action items?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 11.0, action items, individual, there are none. 12.0, reports. Preliminary discussion of social studies. Tonight, I'd like to call on Dr. Lisa Meredith to introduce Toby McQuary, the Coordinator of Social Studies.
Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, members of the board, Dr. Marty and Ms. Calanda. We are excited to be here this evening to talk to you about the Social Studies Program The Parkway mission has certainly had an impact on all of our work over the past couple of years. And as we go on the endeavor of evaluating our curriculum and our programs, the mission will guide all of our work as we strive to ensure that all students achieve our ambitious Our program evaluation is about continuous improvement, that we want to take a pulse on our current reality and look at where we are achieving our outcomes and where we can improve. What are our strengths? And then in addition to finding where we need to improve, being able to identify when we lack the information and knowledge, and to rely on others in a broader community. So here is the program evaluation wheel that you are so familiar with. If you notice, Science and Gifted have shifted down, and they're moving into the yellow. And this year, Social Studies and ESOL are in the red. So this is the first year of their program evaluation, where they will study their current reality. That will be studied against Parkway's mission and vision to ensure that our curriculum is aligned and will help us achieve. That is a new piece of our curriculum evaluations. And so excellence, and we have excellence, but it is not a destination. It is a continuous journey that never ends. And Toby is going to take us on the next step of that journey for Social Studies. I'm pleased to introduce Toby McQuary.
Good evening. It's hard to believe that I'm beginning my third year as Coordinator of Social Studies in Parkway, and I am truly humbled and honored to hold this position. I am excited to begin this journey of program evaluation. I am one who is extremely passionate about Social Studies, and as I look around this evening in the audience, we need some work to do to engage the rest of our community members in the same passion with which I have in Social Studies. But I am also very much looking forward to the objectivity of this program evaluation and being able to return and report to each of you as members of the school board on those areas that not only are we doing well, but those areas that we can do better to help our, all of our students accomplish mission. My part's fairly small this evening. Dr. Tyson will be doing most of the talking, explaining the process of our program evaluation up to this point, and then what our next steps are. What I wanted to do quickly was just to share with you a little bit of an overview of some of the artifacts that I shared with the board in preparation for this evening. The first artifact that we shared was the overview of the course descriptions and units of study. And what you saw in that first artifact was our program from kindergarten up through 11th grade, the required courses for the Social Studies Program in Parkway, as well as the elective courses that are offered throughout the different high schools in the district. It's important to note that the sequence and content of these courses is based on not only the Missouri grade level and course level expectations, but also the national standards in geography, economics, civics, and history. So that's what that first document is, and it's interesting to look at the, when you have some time, to look at the, just the names of the units of instruction that you'll find that far right-hand column in Artifact 1, to see the spiraling nature of the Social Studies curriculum as it begins in kindergarten with our kindergarteners considering, who am I? Working their way all the way through, how do they then become members of a democratic society and truly understand the views, values, and cultures of others? Artifact 2 is a summary of the Social Studies-related programs, which would be those programs that aren't necessarily part of the curriculum, but that supplement our Social Studies curriculum to provide additional enrichment, learning experiences for our students. A few that we are adding this year is our Partners in Education program, which is a partnership with NGA. Interestingly enough, Dr. Amy Spears, our math coordinator, her husband works for NGA and is part of the Partners in Education program that helps go into the elementary schools in the region and really engage students in the study of geography and map-making, which we know is a skill nationwide that the NAEP exams have proven that our students, once they get to the middle grades, start to need some improvement. A couple of other programs, just to point out quickly, is, one that I'm particularly excited about is the Parkway Social Studies Conference that we will be having this year. Again, at little to no cost, I'm finding that our university partners are eager to come in and talk with our teachers about improving their understanding of content. But also, you might recall, many of you members of the board, two years ago that attended the Student Legislative Forum, we are repurposing that this year to give students more of an engaging experience, where they will interact with area experts in terms of media, problem-solving. And students will walk away that evening having been challenged by myself, as well as those that will be joining us from the Red Cross and other organizations that deal with matters of community involvement. They'll be challenged to make a difference and to take action in their community. If you consider that we have 17,000 students in our community, we have a huge number of students who can make a difference, beginning in kindergarten, working up to graduation. And I intend to challenge every student in Parkway to make at least one difference in their community. So that Artifact 2 is an overview of some of the supplemental programs that we offer through the Social Studies Program. Artifact 3 is the Social Studies Mission and Vision, which you will notice is almost word-for-word, the Parkway Mission and Vision. It's interesting, when we consider all of the different content areas, that Social Studies is embedded so clearly in the Parkway Mission and Vision that there wasn't much need for us to tinker with that, because the great work had already been done that helped to facilitate our mission in Social Studies. Artifact 4 represents the rationale for Social Studies and the goals for graduates. This will be an area that we will work to improve. You'll notice that those goals are based primarily on the state of Missouri's goals for graduates as it relates to Social Studies. They're based heavily on the knowledge and skills that are embedded in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Social Studies Program. These were created and developed prior to the Parkway Mission and Vision being created with Project Parkway. So you will see, as we go through this program evaluation, as I stand before you in the spring, the goals will be representative of the Parkway Mission and Vision, and will be measurable outcomes that we can follow over the next curriculum cycle. And then the final artifact, which is one that we are particularly interested in your input this evening and in the coming months, is the main topics and guiding questions for our program evaluation. And as Dr. Tyson will point out, that there have been a large, a small group of teachers at this point that have contributed to this, but in meeting with Ms. Feldman and other members of the Board Liaison Group, we intend to do more than just survey students and community members and teachers. We intend to talk with them, and as intimate discussions as we can have, to truly find out their level of thinking, not only about their knowledge and skills of Social Studies, but also about the instructional practices that they're experiencing each day in our classrooms. So with that, I will go ahead and turn the time over to Dr. Tyson, who will talk about the procedure of the program evaluation.
Thanks. All right. Well, it's always fantastic to come before you all. I truly enjoy being here and talking through this process. Program evaluation clearly is one of our more important jobs, I believe, in a school district, to make sure that the programs and various activities we have going on in the district are making a meaningful impact. So we did have a meeting with some teacher leaders for Social Studies back last semester, I believe, end of February, early March, I believe, and just kind of went through with them what we were trying to do, what was going to be happening here with program evaluation. So the point, and this is a real, these slides are really from that presentation, but just wanted to kind of give you that background. And some of this will look familiar as well. We spoke about this last year as well, this process. So just want to go ahead and make sure we're clear, and you've got that as, there we go. All right, so the most important part of it, I believe, is to go ahead and make sure that we're getting a research design out there. But again, that it needs to be a research design where we know clearly who's responsible for which components, and that we also have communication going on. So the communication in the program evaluation, I mean, if you go some years back, you might remember a time when the program evaluation was, you know, kind of limited to just a few people in the district and wasn't real widespread, and we didn't really include a whole lot of other people in the program evaluation, and that's really changing. And it began to change last year, and we continue to change and move it to a much more collaborative process where there's lots of communication. I mean, our goal is to get the word out, make sure people know that this is happening, make sure that we're gathering as much feedback as possible from stakeholders in the district. So roles, you know, we do have, obviously, with each of these, we have someone who's going to be in charge of the program evaluation, and that is the coordinator or the director of the department or program. So in this case, it's Toby McQuary. I provide substantial assistance when it comes to, let's talk about surveys and designing the surveys, and then pushing surveys out and collecting the data back, and then sending out reports. So that's kind of my role in this whole thing. Building reps, this is an important part. We've been talking about the collaboration, how important that is. You know, the collaboration, I think, also fits very nicely with our PLC model that we're moving into this year as well. I mean, it's all about, PLCs are all about the collaborative work that's going on between teachers and teacher leaders and administrators. So we want to make sure that we're pulling building reps in, other teacher leaders in Social Studies to go ahead and be involved and to offer meaningful contributions to the work. And then also here, the assessment coordinator, Kevin Beckner, he will be really in a sort of a consulting role, even though he's within the district, he'll be within sort of a consulting role, where really in Social Studies, since we don't have the map data anymore, it's really going to rely on the EOC data at the high school when we look for specific achievement, quantitative achievement gains. So that'll be the EOC data. And then also, at this time, I should also mention that since we've had the change with the org structure for this year, Desi Kirchhafer now, our Deputy Superintendent, really has responsibility for oversight of all of this, and I think that that'll work out really well, and he's been just a huge help as we've gone so far, as has Toby, as has Lisa. So we've been doing well, and we're just beginning to dig in. Now we really want to pull other people in and make sure that we're communicating and collaborating. So this process, as I've said already, collaborative one, fits in nicely. You can see on the screen why we want to move to this collaborative process. I don't think I need to convince you all, since you're the ones who approved the PLC movement in this district, but really, it's for all the same reasons. Seven phases of program evaluation. And again, I don't think we need to dwell a whole lot of time, spend a whole lot of time on each of these, but just wanted to kind of highlight each phase, just so that you're aware of the point of the phase and kind of where it fits into the broader evaluation. The first phase, and the phase that we spent, really that we were working on with the teacher leaders back second semester of last year, was the reflection phase, which is really just, what do we want to know, and how are we going to find out? And that was their job, and their job was to really begin with the end in mind. What are our goals? How are we going to find out if we're meeting our goals? And let's talk about how to collect that data. So that's the first, the first, the piece is coming together, looking at goals, and deciding how we're going to assess whether or not we're meeting those goals. Phase 2 is pretty straightforward. We design surveys, and then we send the surveys out, and we collect the survey data back, and that's the collection process. The third section is very important, and again, especially last year, I just remember with Becky Litherland in Science, she really did a fantastic job with kind of developing main findings last year with her group of teacher leaders. So I think that's probably a good pattern to follow. You know, they look at the survey data, or the other EOC data, or map data, EOC in this case, with Social Studies, but then begin to organize that data in a meaningful way, make some conclusions about it, and list main findings. The fourth phase, then, this is really the communication phase. We, it's not about blaming, but it's about making sure that everyone knows what the main findings are, not looking for, again, who might have been responsible or not responsible for what the current reality is, but identifying the current reality, naming it, and then communicating that to folks in Parkway. Phase 5 here is just the idea that now that we kind of know what the main findings are, we're going, you know, we don't want to blame anyone, we're going to communicate these findings, but now we need to step back, and before we do anything, you know, kind of crazy or rash, let's just make sure we're considering everything in the district before we take big actions or take big steps. Let's consider sort of everything as a whole in the district, take a step back, make sure everyone's kind of on board, and that it makes sense from a lot of different people's chairs. And then phase 6 here, this is really the action, so let's just fix what we've noticed we need to fix. And then phase 7 is really all about directing the action. So we've identified what actions we need to take, now let's direct people to get everyone to take part in those actions. And really, this is where a lot of the action teams that we have in this district, that's where they kind of fit in here too, is to really go ahead, identify those actions, and then let's help everyone to implement those. All right, so like most things in education, you know, it's cyclical, right? Never-ending process. And, okay, so quickly, I think we've touched on that a little bit, survey design is myself and other folk. and other folks. The survey data collection, analysis, reporting really rests with me. The achievement data, this is Kevin Beckner working with Toby McQuerry and the building representatives. Any special report? So for example, Toby was talking about some of those partnerships and things like that. If we have any kind of a special partnership, or maybe we want to see, you know, whether or not a field trip to junior achievement, you know, is that having a meaningful impact? These are things where we can, I can talk with Toby, and we can work out what kind of special report, or maybe a special sort of mini-study can we put together and see if it looks like there's evidence to suggest that something's working here, or rather, are we finding really that there isn't a whole lot of evidence to suggest that that is working? Main findings, talked about that, and the recommendations, which really go together nicely, right? You have the main findings, and then from those main findings, what recommendations can we make to the powers that be? And then finally, finally again, the actions, and here's where Superintendent's Council kind of gets dragged into it, and then in some cases, the board as well. All right. Outside expertise, and so with some of the changes here with program evaluation, we talked about Desi's new role as kind of providing the oversight. Another important thing that we want to bring into all of this this year especially is this idea of outside expertise. We tried to do it a little bit last year. I think we even want to step that up a little bit more, and we want to tap into the resources that we have either in the district or at our institutions of higher learning, higher education, and we want to bring in some outside experts who can really look and see what's going on in Parkway and help us to draw some conclusions, to make meaning, or at the very least to develop some survey items that might give us some good data. So our first outside expert that Toby has been working with here is Dr. Michael Grady from St. Louis University, and served as a program evaluator for Teaching American History Grants, and he helped with some of the survey items. We have the surveys already sort of in process. We're not going to go live with them until we make sure we have your feedback, so don't worry, but he's already been helping out. And then we have Dr. Alden Craddock, who is from Maryville, and it looks like his area of emphasis of expertise is in civic responsibility and citizenship, which ties in very nicely to our strategic plan and goals and mission and things like that. So, and he's also helped with some of the survey items as well. So we are at phase one, and what do we want to know? How are we going to find out? So again, it all starts with the program goals. That's what we base everything on. We have to have goals in order to move forward with the program evaluation. We do have goals in Social Studies and in our school district, so we're set there. Based on those goals, we need to then decide what main topics, based on those goals, we're going to look into and study, and then we also need to decide what the guiding questions are going to be. So what questions within each of those main topics are we going to use as our guiding questions? And that is really what drives the whole program evaluation. It drives the survey writing, it drives what the outside experts do, it drives any kind of conversations or focus groups. You know, those guiding questions can be great, great questions for focus groups because really the whole idea of a focus group is you want to have one sort of topic, and then you just want to, you want to drive down and really understand it at a very deep level, whereas survey data gives us kind of a, on the surface, look. The focus group, the idea is to really dig and go deep and explore. So moving on, how are we going to find out? Okay, so think about the data we currently have, what data do we need to collect, who should we survey, and then we want to figure out what the survey items should look like. And so really with the group that we've already met with, the teacher leaders in Social Studies, we have some main topics here, and again, I really need to thank Toby for his hard work. He's, not only has his teachers done a great job coming together and establishing the main topics and the guiding questions, but also then Toby really did a good job synthesizing, kind of boiling it down, and here are, you know, in a nutshell, here are the main topics that we have. There are five, it's manageable. And then also, here are the guiding questions, which as you will see, very manageable as well. So you can see what we have up here, and obviously the district mission and vision is our biggest main topic and really the sort of what drives all of this. And then you can see the others, civic responsibility and citizenship, things that go on in the classroom, equity, and then curricular types of items and questions. So mission and vision, we have one question. Is Social Studies helping us to accomplish Parkway's mission and vision? Civic responsibility and citizenship, are we preparing students to be citizens in a democratic society? The classroom piece, practice, engagement, and rigor. Really, we want to explore the purpose of Social Studies and see if there's alignment between what the students and the teachers are saying. And then we also want to look at the methods of learning and the strategies of teaching, and again, see if there's alignment between teachers and students, what they think, and see if we can draw some conclusions and see if that, how that data sits with us when we get that back. Equity, time is always a question, especially for Social Studies. And then we also have the question of are we meeting the needs of all students? Are we bringing all students? Is Social Studies helping all students? Equity again, confidence is prominent in our mission and vision, so that's the question there about confidence. And then down below, understanding the views, values, and cultures of others, also part of our mission and vision and strategic plan. Curricular offerings and resources. Are we preparing students for their next educational challenges? And then how is professional development working? Two more questions for the curricular resources and offerings. The first one is about the OCG, the Online Curriculum Guide. Is it providing the support to teachers that the teachers need? And then finally, the question about textbooks and trade books, and are these helpful in doing what they need to do to help students learn Social Studies? So this is the last slide right here. We just went through the five proposed topics that the teacher leaders and Toby worked together to identify, and now we are very, we're very much wanting the feedback of our fine Board of Education. You know, what curiosities does the Board of Education have? What additional topics maybe do you see that we haven't identified? Are there some guiding questions that we could consider as we're building some of our surveys or as we're talking about, you know, kind of focus group areas of emphasis, as we're talking about what can we have our outside experts be looking into? So really, this is the most important time, I think, of this, of this presentation is to just learn from the Board of Education, what's been popping into your mind as I rolled through some of this, and is there something that you really want to know about that I haven't touched on or that the group here that we met with, the teacher leaders, haven't yet identified? So with that, I will turn it over to the Board of Education. I will stand here, though, and listen. And then if you have any questions, I will, you know, the purpose of this is not for me or for Toby to answer questions at this point. It's just for us to go ahead and get the questions out there so that we can study those. If you do have questions about the process, obviously, I, you know, no problem answering those, so.
I think this is a great framework to begin to look at this, and I'm excited about it and thinking some good things are going to come out of it. More than forty years ago, a young student by the name of Chris got asked his dad, what is the point of history? And I think a lot of students still have that kind of question when we throw it at them, what's the point? What's the value? How does it affect? And of course, as an adult, I get, it's one of my favorite subjects now, and I love history and know that it has an impact. So I guess what I'm looking at there is, I had an interesting experience this summer. Personal finance is also one that can glaze over a young person's eyes if all we throw at them is a textbook and some lectures, but maybe because it was a two-hour class, about the last forty minutes of the class, they were able to play this game called virtual finance and make mistakes and see how it affected them. I know my little guy, he ended up in the hospital, had to declare bankruptcy because he didn't have insurance, got robbed, decided that he would take the bus instead of a, anyway, all these kinds of life experiences were thrown at him, and when I'd pick these guys up, there were three of them, I'd pick them up and drive them home. All I did was listen to them talk, and that I found very engaging, very exciting. They learned more about how that impacts their life. And I guess what I'm saying is, I think that there needs to be a part in here where we look at our own pedagogy and decide, how are we reaching kids? If it's just lectures, then it's probably going to be about the same result that happened to me forty years ago. So I'm glad to see that there, and I hope that we really delve into that, like how do we engage these kids so that they see that social science really is one of the biggest areas that they'll be involved in throughout their lives.
You touched on the assessment role and seemed to focus pretty much exclusively on the EOC results. We've got a pile of common assessments that are stored somewhere in a database, is that correct?
I'm trying to think of where we are with, okay, so for middle school, it sounds like we have a pile of scores stored in the database.
Okay, and I guess just as a thought, as you were going through your slides, it kind of popped to me, and maybe in the aggregate, they don't mean a whole lot, but I think we've got, maybe play around with some data mining techniques, and there may be some answers to the engagement and the alignment of expectation questions buried in that data that maybe we can tease out with the appropriate massaging. And then I guess for Toby, looking at your artifact two, and your student legislative forum, and you were talking about effective advocacy and that sort of thing, and when Mr. McCarter was making his public statement, it struck me, maybe we ought to talk to the tobacco lobbyists, and we are concerned with effective advocacy, right? We don't really, subject matter doesn't bother us that much, but we do have a pretty outstanding communications department in the district, and there's a Communications Advisory Citizen Committee that has some pretty amazing talent there. So I would think maybe in the weaving those resources into the, into that effort might, because I'm sure Paul doesn't have, you know, all that much to do in this. He's got a vast staff, he can delegate this sort of stuff. Oh, wait a minute.
What I think I heard you say is that there, and maybe I'm trying to interpret, but are you suggesting in artifacts too, there's probably blended in there some really, already some assessments that we could tie into that, or if not, how do we, how do we, how do we really assess students' involvement in service learning or various aspects of JA or whatever?
I think if we're going to get into, I mean, literally, Toby was talking about advocacy and performance, well, we ought to plan on measuring that performance if at all possible, and I think probably we've got some resources to do that. And I think that would, as opposed to a quiz and a letter grade, tangible results in the community ought to be what would certainly, I would think, have engaged Chris forty years ago, as opposed to another. Maybe you grab study sheet, though we know you like the smell of those. All right, that's all I had.
Yeah, I mean, just to kind of piggyback up that a little bit, I mean, there's a whole spectrum of skills that you're talking about here. It's as opposed to like math, that you can evaluate when a student's master skill, and this involves everything from, you know, the history aspects to, like Mr. Major was talking about, engagement, and I think assessing the bubble of student engagement is really important here because that's, that really goes to some of the mission, the mission, the core principles that you're talking about.
Common thing, the interaction with the kids, getting them involved.
I think the internal evaluation is outstanding, there's no question about it, and I do appreciate the fact that we're going to have some outside expertise in the two professors from the university's stuff, but would it be worthwhile to investigate exemplary programs in school districts throughout the country, you know, two or three or four, whatever, where we could have some interaction with them and find out what they're doing and what we can learn from them? That may help us in terms of content as well as instructional strategies and approaches and to teaching Social Studies. I think it's always worthwhile, and I think there's great programs, there has to be around the country, and I'm not sure exactly how to find them, but, you know, I think it'd be worthwhile to even extend beyond the university professor expertise and look elsewhere and see what we can learn. We may not learn a whole lot, but at the same time, it'll confirm in our own situation that our program is doing very well compared to others, but we also may learn something from other districts as well, so.
And I think we need to look beyond the US, we need to look globally, and I think Mrs. Feldman and I need to go to the Authentic Education Conference in Paris.
I'm joking, I'm joking. But it did sound pretty, pretty.
Do you need a program evaluator to go with you?
I think so, definitely. But I think there's so much going on, not just here, but all over the world, and you see these reports about kids talking with other kids in other countries about, you know, common things, and it's just very interesting, so maybe we need to look at that.
It's very engaging. Yeah. Get them involved.
All right, I, as usual, have a few questions here. I'm looking at your course offering list for your high school students, and I'm truly amazed at the vast array of selections. I mean, what a great, what a great list this is. If we take out the AP and the honors classes and kind of set those aside, and then we look at all the choices that are left for our general education students, my question is, are all these offerings available to all of our high school students? I suspect, like we saw in Science, that there are certain offerings that are only available at certain high schools. And my question is, how do we evaluate the need, the desire for students to take these classes? How do we figure out if what we're offering is really what they want to take until we're after the fact, after the fact of registration, that we see a course didn't have enough students to make a go of it? And, you know, what basis do we use to evaluate that on? Do we have a minimum number of students that can sign up for a class? And how does that affect us when you go back to the AP classes? Do we have areas in the district where we don't have enough kids signing up for some of these really important AP classes? And how do we get that possibilities out there to all of our high school students to be able to take all of these great offerings? So that's number one. Number two is, I think, that our flipped, help me with the terminology, our?
Flipped classrooms.
Flipped classrooms. This would be, I think we talked about it with you, Toby, when we were having our subcommittee group. Social Studies really kind of can lend itself to a flipped classroom type of learning environment, and how do we get on the bandwagon, where do we start? How do we pilot? How do we evaluate the results of that? What grade level would be a good place to start for that? This is an election year. When we were talking before the meeting started, I think yesterday's election results were on the tongues of all the adults in the room, and my question is, we do once a year a legislative forum, our juniors take government, but how do we truly engage them in our elective process here in the United States, especially when it's a presidential election year? There's so much stuff that's going on in the community, you know, between what's in the newspapers, the debates on television, just, you know, seeing and hearing the candidate's speeches. How do we teach our kids how to become responsible citizens when they turn eighteen and it's their turn to vote? And where does that fall within our course offerings? And how can we take advantage of that when there's so much of it being served up? How do we teach kids how to kind of weed through all of the noise to get to the heart of the matter? When Mr. McCarter was talking about, you know, ballot language or misleading advertising on behalf of the tobacco lobby, and some people were talking about the wording of amendment two that passed yesterday, isn't our responsibility to teach our kids how to interpret these things that they're going to be voting on, and how important it is to really understand what they're voting for or against? So that's something that I'm really interested in. I think it's kind of our responsibility to teach our students how to be good corporate citizens, or good, I'm sorry, good community citizens. And then service hours. I know we have our high school juniors for government, they complete service hours, and I don't know if that's a requirement at state or if that's just a Parkway requirement. And I don't know if that's a requirement in state, or if that's just a Parkway requirement, but I'm curious as to where that comes from, and what the lesson is, and if the kids understand what the lesson is. Or if they just have a list of things, and they have to get the hours, and they check them off, and have an adult sign it, and then they go on to the next thing. Are they really getting the meaning of doing community service? Anybody else? Dr. Marty, what do you think?
I was, my comments were kind of with Bruce, in terms of some of the opportunities for some new, looking at some new assessments and projects. But I think that falls under the study of practices. I mean, it's happened something you've talked about a little bit, because I think that there's some great opportunities in social studies. So, that's why I was, I was trying to lead Bruce into saying that artifacts two is a way to do that, but there's certainly some other things too that potentially would do that, that are more authentic, so that conference in Paris would really be a way to make some sense.
Through webcasts, right?
Webcasts.
She knew French.
I do.
And that's the good thing she does.
I will just, I just want to say to his credit, and I think, I know Bruce has been involved a little bit, Toby has been really challenging the social studies department teachers. Last January, he brought in a professor at the University of Michigan, was in Toby, to really force some discussion on the teaching of history, thinking much deeper than just the textbook approach. And so, I think this study is marvelous, but I just want to say, in all this, Toby continues, I think, to really push the envelope of our social studies teachers, K-12. You have what ...
I have my blue QFT artifact that resides in the front of my book now, so, thank you, Toby.
So, in saying that, I just think that one of the things that I think will be interesting to this study is that, especially internally, I think Toby really has enlightened a lot of our staff members into thinking differently. And I think it'll be interesting now to see if that's reflective in some of their, you know, some of their feedback as well. Are they really challenging themselves and their students differently than perhaps they did a couple of years ago? I think it's going to be an exciting study, and just because we already got a lot of, you know, a lot of momentum within the social studies department, the study will, I think, confirm a lot of that, and perhaps it'll lead us in new areas.
I love how far we've come focusing on mission and vision, and that's what this is all about. It just seems like we've come a long way with this.
Absolutely.
It hasn't even been done yet.
Anybody else? Well, then, I thank you both, and we look forward to hearing from you at your program evaluation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go on now with 14.0 policy review, 14.01 GCIA dot B P and G, staff development. May I have Mrs. Liz Morrison come on down and talk to us about this, coordinator of staff development? Hello.
The board policies for you guys to review are the ones that have to deal with the changes in staff development for two reasons. One of them, well, the staff development, the National Council for Staff Development changed their thinking around professional learning. One of the things they changed was changing it from staff development to professional learning. And so, we wanted to make sure that our documents that we have in Parkway reflect the changes that are happening at the national level. So, that's why you see the change in the document that have to do with professional learning from staff development. Then, all the strike-throughs on the document, that was the old wording, and then all the red on the document was all the new wording. So, basically, I just took the, got rid of the old and put in the new, so we would be up to date with our board policy. Then, the larger document, which is, I can't see close up anymore, I can't see far away anymore.
Well, there's nothing to see, because the server's down. The server's down, so there's nothing to see. So, don't worry about it. That's why we were ...
I'll hold up my copy if you want.
Work with me, we'll just pretend we have a document right here. So, the larger document, the one that's multiple pages long, that one has the changes that also were in the new teacher evaluation and professional learning model. So, the changes in there reflect, we went from four credit hours in four years to three in three, that simply goes to the teacher evaluation model. It also reflects any other changes in the document that go with, is it up yet? Nothing, I've got nothing. Okay. That reflects the professional learning, and those are basically the changes that we put in there, just so our documents reflect what's happening at the national level, and also so our documents have what happened in the teacher evaluation model was also included in that document. So, everything we have in Parkway is up to date and aligned. Any questions? The document, oh, there it is! Keep making it bigger! So, and as you guys can see, I simply went there and I struck out the old and put in the new. Any questions?
I'm still reading, there's a lot of red, a lot of red.
There's a lot of red. The one document's like, and I didn't know how to, you have to show the differences, so there's a lot of red on it.
That's great.
Anybody have anything for this?
Let's see, do we have any implications from recent changes in state law that are going to ...
With the way ...
It's already in there, or ...
No, yeah, I'm joking, you got, no, no, we're going to wait and study it, but it's basically, when that comes, we'll have to change the policy again. I think it's important we review these policies for that very reason, that when changes happen at the national and state level, that Parkway's on the cutting edge and not catching up. So, when that happens, we'll make sure that we take any documents that we have that relate to that organization, that we do.
It's like a continuous circle.
Didn't we have a slide on that?
Anybody else have anything for this? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
15.0, call for a special meeting, August 20th, 2012. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a special meeting on Monday, August 20th, 2012, at 6:00 p.m. at the Administration Building?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. 16.0, call for executive session, September 19th, 2012. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for an executive session, including any record or vote, on Wednesday, September 19th, 2012, at 6:30 p.m. and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district, and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and attorneys, six ten point oh two one point one. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, six ten point oh two one point three. Three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, six ten point oh two one point thirteen. So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Kalenda?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Major?
Affirmative.
Mrs. Mulman?
Yes.
Dr. Siercino?
Yes.
Mrs. Felton?
Yes. Thank you. 17.0, recess. What time is it? Let's see, 8:30. We're doing really well. 18.0, closed meeting. None. 19.0, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
There is. You can stay.
Thank you. Motion carries, six one. At this time, we will adjourn. Thank you for your attendance, and good luck tomorrow.
It's only 8:33, come on.